Hey Steve, how you doing? Glad to meet you.
My wife Julia.
Hi Julia, my name is Jared. This is my wife, kids. Yeah. You own the farm and the home on the opposite side of the gully, is that correct?
Yes.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah. I imagine all of Rollinsford one time was flowing, right?
Sand could.
Good. That explains the sand. Yeah. Easy digging.
Yeah.
Yeah, it shut off and you gotta just close the door and open again.
Is Jerry the manual?
No, I'm at every meeting. I'm at every meeting, so I know because...
Yes.
That's the town.
One's official and one's open?
Sure.
That's the towns, this is a citizens.
Cross foot verified. About seven o'clock by my computer watch, so I gotta call the ZBA meeting towards tonight, and I'm gonna have other secretary read the application list of abutters professionals and confirmation of those for the board.
So this is case 2106. Jared and my chair in Cottage Lane are seeking a variance to table six point nine. Permitted uses: eight, other principal uses: five, private airports. At tax map 22 lot two in the urban residential zone in order to allow the private recreation use of a helicopter. Notice was published in the newspaper on July the 14th, and the following abutters were contested by certified male. Charles and Monique Paveras, the Traer Revocable Trust of 2021, Linda Moores, Robert and Aaron Cavanaugh, Richard and Brenda McAdavy, the W. and L. Sharette Family Revocable Trust.
Okay, alright, great, thank you. So, Mr. Traer, why don't you go ahead and make your presentation?
Sure. My name is Jared Traer, two Cottage Lane. Been living in Rollinsford for about five years now.
Almost six.
Almost six. Grew up in a small town similar to Rollinsford, Neapolles, New Hampshire. And I'm here today, first time I've ever been to a ZBA for a meeting. So it's gonna be a little bit new to me, but I'm here to seek a variance and be very transparent and do what I can to address and answer any questions about the use I am looking to establish. I've sent, and I hope the community has the opportunity to look at my application and some mapping and some other details. So I guess I'm gonna back this up a little bit in the sense that we're here in Rollinsford, right? We live here, we moved here. I used to live in Kidder, he's too busy for me. That small-town feeling. You know, and I think we can maintain that. Helicopters, in my opinion, yes, I am a helicopter pilot, but in my opinion, there is some bias. Get a lousy rap, you know, see them in movies, smoke, guns, turbine engines, loud. So I can understand when people see or hear helicopters, it's a big timeout, this is crazy. And I'm not sure, is this the first time the ZBA has ever heard a variance for helicopter use in the town of Rollinsford? So regardless, this is a little bit new to me, and I don't like the words "helport", "airport", because if I think of a "helport", if I think of an "airport", I think of probably what many of you think of, is traffic, lights, sound, noise, passengers in and out. And what I'm looking today is a conditional use, conditions to, if possible, to be set by the board in the residency of Rollinsford, to allow a landing takeoff from my residence. Conditional use meaning times, no passengers, no fuel, no lights, no buildings, no construction, and also to maintain, the ability to maintain that quiet and peaceful feel that we do have here in Rollinsford that I think we all value.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Yes, sir. Sorry to interrupt, but conditional use is a specific approval under different circumstances? You're asking for a variance. I think what you meant to say is that you're asking for a variance with conditions attached.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, no, thank you. And I want to be able to present in a way, you know, with the ability to say, hey, you know what, maybe we can work this out and work together? You know, I think we can all probably come here and say, hey, we came here for a conversation, not a confrontation, and I hope we can, you know, work that out. So I'm transparent, any questions, I'll do my best to answer. And, you know, with getting a letter from Mr. Roberts here, and also Shane and Linda Moore, I agree with most of that. I really do. I don't have a hard stop or a hard question. I'm like, yeah, I get it, and I would say the same stuff. So it's, to me, I just think that we can work harmoniously, say, hey, can this work? Can change be, can a little bit of change be recognized and accepted by the town and the citizens with conditions? But I'm not looking for a conditional use.
Alright, okay, well, thank you for your presentation.
I have one other question. And I'm sorry to interrupt. I was asked, I think by Mr. Clark, Tom Clark, if any of the board or any of the residents abutters, they addressed they may want to come over to my house. And I said, you know, open door policy, no, you can come wherever, you don't have to call, no schedule, no nothing. Did anyone take advantage of that, stopping over and walking around?
I'm sorry, but it's really not appropriate of the applicant to question the board, it's the other way around.
Oh, God, this is new to me. God.
It's okay.
I'll refrain.
It's okay. Alright, okay, so let's start with questions of the board, and I'm gonna go to Mr. Cass. Too many questions for the applicant.
So just a few, just to lay the groundwork. So you purchased the property in November of 2015?
Correct.
Okay. And in the deed, there was a reference to some protective covenants?
Correct.
Okay. And I assume that you read those protective covenants?
Correct.
That referenced that no aircraft, including but not limited to helicopters, shall be allowed, and no landing area for such aircraft?
Yes.
Okay, so you did purchase the property with that on the...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And to that note, in my application, the tenets that I attached were FAA-approved in state New Hampshire. And just to let everyone know, I didn't get that to come here. You have to start somewhere. I could have started with the town and the neighbors, and then gone to the FAA and the state, but I figured safety pretty much first, so that's why I got, or applied and received FAA approval and state New Hampshire approval as well.
Okay. But the land, when you purchased the property, it is subject to protective covenants that prohibit?
Yes.
Okay. And so you were aware of that?
Yes, oh yeah.
Okay. I have no other questions, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Stasi, any questions?
Okay. I am concerned about the noise level.
Sure.
And also flying over area residents.
Yeah. Yeah, I can talk on that. Flying over populated area and noise, and those are two concerns. As a resident of Rollinsford or anywhere, I would be concerned as well. I can speak to studies that I've read on the internet about noise in decibels, and also my own study as well. And, you know, I can compare, hey, a helicopter from 500 feet above, the ground is relevant to some kind of household or yard tool. So you'd actually, the data that I found, it's less infringing than maybe a wood chipper, a backpack blower, chainsaw, common tools that I use in my home to maintain my home. One thing that, those tools can run, and I use them, and I believe it's pretty necessary for the house or yard property that I have, as many of you other feel here. Those are continued use, whereas a helicopter landing is four minutes, and takeoff is four minutes, so it's not like running for four hours. But the noise, absolutely. So from 500 feet away, it's gonna be less impact noise than a chainsaw with splitter of those things, and I have data to support that. The flying over congested area, absolutely. It's a no known aviation to be flying over a congested area. Helicopters are helicopters because they don't need runways to land, but at the same time, you don't want to disturb livestock, residents, things of that nature. So I feel with having the FAA come out in state New Hampshire and say, hey, here's your approach, here's your angles, you can safely come in and out without disrupting at the elevation becoming altitude, I should say.
I don't, I'm not able to see Rollinsford as being congested, but you do have immediate neighbors.
Yes, I do. Abutters on, I think, three or four sides, and abutters that I've spoke to as well. So yes, you're right. The approach with the variable winds would be coming on, I believe it stands property the, but where you grow corn, I believe?
Okay. Charlie Cabirisus.
Okay, Charlie's property, so there's no overflying of homes, there's no overflying of livestock, horses, or anything like that.
No overflying of homes?
Correct.
Okay, just trying to...
Helicopters, you deal with wind and variable winds and such, so I would not overfly homes to any extent.
So you would fly to the field behind you and up? Is that it?
Well, so I have a map of variable winds, and I think I supplied it, approach and departure. And to your question, different than an airplane, yes, helicopter, you walk and then depart, and then come in and come down. So disruption noise is, would be a non-issue if you want to stay in decimal range. And I also would like to address, you know, any kind of fuel concerns. It's not a turbine, it's a piston-driven helicopter. There's no jet fuel or anything like that. It's, you know, you put maybe 95 octane in your car, 97, this takes 100 octane, so it's very similar. And the fuel tank is actually the size of a car, too, so it's not like we'll be driving around 100 gallons of fuel or anything like that.
Where would the fuel be?
There'd be no fuel kept on site there, fuel would be in the helicopter only.
Thank you.
Mr. Uwita?
Yeah, I smiled when you said, when you asked if we had had an application before. No, but now that you mention it, I think, you know, we know that there is a helicopter or has been in town, but the point I want to make for the record is, correct me if I'm wrong, but as a board, we're supposed to treat each one of these cases in a penalty and the concept of precedent and whatnot. It's not like in the courts or the legal world, this is, we treat every one of these on their own. So I think some of us are aware that, yeah, there is a gun, I don't know if he's still finding it or not, but it's really not germane to tonight's...
Oh, yeah, and I apologize for asking the board questions.
That's a good question. It's, I just, and that's also good for the record to recall, or to reiterate that that is in fact what our ordinance and the vending statute requires.
I do want to reiterate, I'm looking for the ability with conditions, voice, to have the ability, whether it's X amount of times per year. I have and keep my helicopter at a hangar in Sanford, it's not at my house, and I will continue to do that. So I'm looking for the ability to land and take off with conditions, whether it's time, amounts, things of that nature.
But I have no questions. Okay. Ms. Mears?
Yeah, so I just have a few questions. This is located, this property is located in the residential district. You explained, you went through the application. I am not seeing a hardship criteria that you've addressed. I don't know if you want to try and speak to that hardship?
Sure, sure. I'd like to, I don't know if you had the opportunity to receive Mr. Roberts' letter?
Go ahead and mail it to the board.
Okay, yeah, just to know if you have the opportunity to read that about hardships and also the Moores as well. And I can do my best to, I don't have a copy of it here, but do my best to answer any questions you may have as far as a hardship and if the land is unique, because I understand those are two piloting points. Is the land neat? I find it is in the sense that it's surrounded by gullies on each side, wooded area, buffers, no flying homes. I've spoke to my two immediate neighbors, abutters, and they're okay with this, they're not here, so that's kind of hearsay. But hardship, and is it for my personal use only? And how is it hardship? Fair question. I started this meeting by saying I agree with 85% of, 90% of the feedback that I received. Hardship, to me, is an interesting word because it does, it create a hardship my life if I'm not granted this variance. And I would say no. It's a convenience, yes, personally, yes. And that's why I'm here to not say, hey, black and white, I'm gonna be coming in and out of here from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. three times a day, or say, hey, can we collectively work together as neighbors to see if this is something that we can work out? So I don't know how the ZBA works if it is black or if it's white, but a hardship, it's a convenience, it would allow me to work a little bit differently for, well, means for work, yes. But is it hardship? Honestly, I don't think, personally, yes, but in any other one's eyes, I would say no.
That's my last question.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Lee?
I have no questions.
Alright. I think I'm gonna ask for a couple of questions for background. So what type of helicopter is this?
Sure. It's a Robinson R-44. Forty-four means foreplace, I have ability to take one myself and three other passengers, piston-driven, gasoline, it's not turbine, it's not MASH, it's not Magnum PI. Again, it's not the movies, it's a piston-driven helicopter that is the most common helicopter in United States.
Okay. And how many passenger is this helicopter?
Besides me, I'm able to take three.
Three?
But I'm not asking to take passengers or tours or any of that stuff.
Okay. And so, and up until now, where has the helicopter been kept?
Sanford Airport.
Okay. And why wouldn't you keep it, by the way, at the Rochester Airport, which is a lot closer?
Sanford has something called the FBO, has a restaurant there, has maintenance, so if you're ever to do maintenance on an aircraft, it's nice to keep it close to where you have it. In Sanford, I went to flight school there a long time ago, so I have a network of, I would say, friends and colleagues in Sanford. Even though it's not the closest airport, Pease or Sky Haven are both there, and even Littlebrook in Elliott, but I keep it in Sanford.
Okay, alright. And you currently fly the helicopter to your residence in Rollinsford now?
Well, I, the answer, well, can I refrain to the board and the audience here about the last two months and the effectiveness of, not the effectiveness, the grievance that's been caused the last two months of flying in and out of my house?
I mean, I'm not sure I understand what you're saying, but I may have to follow up, but go ahead and answer the question as you, as you...
So the question to me was, have I been flying into my house? Yes, I have.
Okay. Alright, and so for how long have you been flying the helicopter to your house in Rollinsford?
So, I don't know, four months maybe? And Tom Clark did say, when you got the first call, that we need to go in front of the ZBA. And he says, however, between now and the time you meet the ZBA, which has been a couple of months, because I just missed it the month before, you can continue status quo of what you're doing.
Okay, so four months ago, you started flying into your home, and why, and so you own the home since 2015, and how long have you owned the helicopter for?
Yeah, so a backup. I've been flying in for the last, on occasion, for the last five years.
Okay.
Alright? More frequently in the last four or five months. I've owned the helicopter for two or three months.
Alright, so you had owned a helicopter before then?
No, not personally. I rented a helicopter.
Okay.
Prior to doing...
Okay, alright, so, alright, and so prior to the last four to five months, approximately how many times a month would you bring, fly a helicopter into the...
Zero to one.
What's that?
Zero to one.
Zero to one, okay.
There've been a year that there's no helicopter activity. It might have been a month, there's three times landing.
Okay. And what's led to the increase of four to five times, or, I guess I should ask you, so the past four to five months, you've had an increase in flight, and what would you say the average per month is of the last four to five months?
Less than once a month. And I've logged books and FAA can back that up.
Okay. And so, since you've been flying a helicopter onto your property, have you received any complaints from abutters or residents in Rollinsford?
No. I've received three calls, one from someone that lives on Woodlawn Ave., the street, someone that lives in Stockholm Circle, and then someone on Cottage Lane that it's fine. I reached out and said, hey, if it's a problem, please let me know. It's for recreation, it's, I don't need you to do this, but if it's a problem, please talk to me first, call me, text me, email me, because I want to be neighborly, and I hope we can continue to be neighborly.
Okay.
And those three people in support, hey Jared, fine by me, didn't even hear it, but again, I'm more concerned about the noise I make in my house with chainsaw, lawnmower, backpack blower, pressure washer.
Okay. Going to the unnecessary hardship provision, one of the criteria is, one of the special conditions of property that distinguish your property from other properties in the area, that denial of variance would result in unnecessary hardship. And how would it result in unnecessary hardship to you?
It would be, and I hate to say, but it's true, it's convenience. I don't feel a helicopter landing on a certain amount of times would infringe the quiet enjoyment of our neighborhood or our community. That's why I keep saying conditional, but I don't know if that's the right word with the board, but with restrictions.
Okay.
I guess it's no different than if I had a diesel truck that I need to drive for work and I need to start at 5:00 in the morning. I'd probably be here asking for the ZBA, hey, can I start my vehicle in the morning early? And what is, oh, I had a question, but I, hey, for God, I can't ask. I just guess I was curious about the noise ordinance in town Rollinsford at times, but I can look that up, so. So I would put it in that column of, you know, and of course I wouldn't fly a helicopter at 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning, but a diesel truck starting up to warm up before someone goes to work.
Another aspect of the variance is, granted, the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. How would granting the variance, how would it not be contrary to the public interest? Explain that to me.
So are you meaning not be contrary, meaning how would it not affect the public?
Well, I mean, I don't know if I want to define the statute of language, but it's your burden to prove it, that your case tonight. And how would, I guess I'll phrase it this way, describe it for me this way, how would the variance, granted variance, be in the interest of the public?
I don't believe it'd have a negative impact with conditions on the public, just as a diesel truck who started early in the morning. I'll make sure, people live in Rollinsford for a reason, I live in Rollinsford for a reason, I want to maintain that small-town feel, it will fit something there, a lot of charm.
Another issue is, if the variance were granted, the spirit, the ordinance would be observed because, so the ordinance prohibits a private airport, so how would it, how would granting the variance uphold the spirit of the ordinance?
Sure. The word that sticks out there is airport. I think there's a connotation that an airport's an airport. I'm not looking to do that, I'm looking for the ability with a certain limited, with feedback from the town or the abutters, but to answer your question, I'm trying not to skirt around that, that's not my intent, but I don't think it negatively impacts the abutters or those folks in Rollinsford.
Okay. Another factor is granting the variance would do substantial justice. Why would granting the variance do substantial justice?
I believe it would, for me personally, and again, I think this is for me personally, it would grant substantial justice because it would allow me more effective in my work.
Okay.
Which I use, I use a helicopter for my work.
And going to number four, if the variance were granted, the values of surrounding property would not be diminished?
Correct.
How is it that you base the belief that surrounding property would not be diminished?
Sure. There's no structure, there's no lighting, there's nothing, this is something, if granted, can be taken away, so there's no impact, there's no altercations of any land or fencing, none of that stuff.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I'm now going to turn to questions and comments for the public, give a better turnout to normal, very pleased with that. And so when, I'll make sure everyone gets to be heard. Before you comment, perhaps raise a hand or something, please state your name and address. Thank you. I'm opening up to the public here.
Shane Moores for Cottage Lane.
I'm sorry, were you saying him again?
Shane Moores for Cottage Lane. So my wife and I do oppose the request for variance. I mean, we had heard the helicopter over time come in, and I believe it was your father-in-law, is that correct, that you used to fly in previously?
Years ago, yes.
Yeah, so we have heard it. We usually, we have air conditioning, so in the summertime, our windows are closed, so it's not like we have windows open. And it is loud, and it is disturbing, and now it would obviously be more frequent than it was before. So it is something we're looking, we specifically chose where we live based on the protective covenants, based on wanting a quiet residential area to live in, and that's what we want to maintain. So it's as simple as that.
Can I address Shane?
Not at the moment.
Oh, okay.
The chair will give an opportunity for you to reply after the public comment.
Understood.
Alright, anyone else? Can I ask a question? This question, where is this coming?
I believe that's appropriate, yes.
It's pretty simple, we guess. When you bought your property, were you aware that this activity was going on?
No, we bought our property back in 1998, so well before Mr. Traer purchased his property.
Anyone else like to make a public comment? Mr. Roberts. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, feel a little odd standing, is it okay if I sit?
That's fine.
1:30 Roberts Road, with my wife Julia. We are not technical abutters, but we are in the vicinity, obviously. Cottage Lane property used to be part of the farm, the family farm. First, I applaud Jared and his wife, you particularly, Jared, for your candor, I appreciate that. So it's good to hear that view of things, and welcome to the neighborhood, five or six years later. But my viewpoint on behalf of my wife is the legal viewpoint. And so I've gone through the five factors that's in the submission that I provided, and as the board knows, Jared would have to satisfy each of the five factors in order to have a variance. I don't think any of the five he can satisfy, but it only takes one. And while I can sympathize with your desire to have the helicopter, I think that it's not appropriate in that particular area for a number of reasons. First and foremost, the covenants. I think the board could be doing you a favor if the variance is denied, because then if you were to engage in the helicopter operation, you could be subject to a lawsuit by one of your neighbors to enforce the protective covenants, and if you lose that suit, you get whacked with attorney's suit, so you don't want to do that. So that's a concern. The covenants are not the board's jurisdiction, but it does play a role because it established the nature of that neighborhood. In fact, I hadn't recalled this, but when I looked at the covenants a couple of, yesterday I guess, I realized I helped draft those, and it's, you know, my signature on all the notary things. So I worked with Mr. Connolly, who did the development back in, before I guess, on drafting those, and they're there for a reason. They're there for just what, you know, Shane and Linda said, they want a quiet neighborhood. So, um, you know, again, I appreciate the convenience. Um, you know, I know Eric's got projects all over the place, right? So, uh, but this isn't the place for a helicopter, unfortunately. So I would just stand on the submission that I've provided to the board in terms of each of the five elements have not been met. And asked if the variance could be denied. All right, Mr. Roberts. Uh, anybody else in the public want to comment?
Can I make another comment in addition to the one I previously did?
I don't see one.
Um, I actually am an enthusiast of aviation. So I certainly don't have anything against it. When I was a young man, I actually flew with my father. My father was a private pilot, had his own plane for a number of years, although it wasn't a helicopter. But we flew out of an airport, obviously didn't have a private landing strip. So it wasn't really a hardship for us. When my father wanted to go flying and he wanted to take me with him, he took us to the airport. We went flying and we landed and drove home. So it certainly wasn't any kind of a hardship. It was 15, 20 minutes of driving each way, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Not seeing any. Um, going to, uh, close the session. If you want to give the evidence enough to everybody. Oh, yes, that's right. Yep, please, please, Mr. Roberts.
Um, to address Mr. Roberts, I, I've put this in kind of three, a couple of buckets, right? Where do you start? And you have town ordinance, you have restricted covenants, you have approvals from the state, you have approvals from the FAA. So there's no really good place to start. But my, my creepiness stuck out is I don't know how Eric, my employer, has any relevance to this. Um, so I'm not sure why we address that. Noise, if it's noise, which 100% I can, and if I could show you by decimal readings that noise is no impact, maybe impact more so than a chainsaw, a weed whacker, things of that nature, um, I would love the ability to do that. Secondly, it's the covenants. 100% agree, right? And looking at the covenants, the second page of it says prohibits uses underground pools. We have underground pools. So, and I'm not saying, hey, we're going to pick apart this stuff. And I also understand that you can change covenants with four to five votes. So I put these into buckets, right? And said, hey, there's no reason rapping on my neighbors' doors and asking to sign a pro Jared Langus helicopter here unless I talk with the town. There's no reason to talk to the town until, so I'm doing it in buckets here. But I, I guess, um, for those, Mr. Roberts, the, you know, the noise, the error, and the covenants, a little bit questionable. But I, I came to this meeting and I said, hey, I agree 9% of what you guys say. I live in Rawlinsburg, that small town feel. I don't feel like landing a helicopter is going to be an infringement on noise any more so than a weed whacker, things that run continuously. Um, and I can address safety, that's as well. But I, I appreciate, and I appreciate, and I came in here saying, hey, I'm an open book, right? I'm my house, I'm transparent. And I appreciate your concerns. Because I'd have them too, and I do have them. You know, so I, I do appreciate that, Mr. Roberts. And, yeah, I'm glad you're an aviation enthusiast. You know, the difference is airplanes and helicopters, it's like Athens and Wiltshire, but they have that aviation, so, yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trey. Um, all right, so I'm going to, close the public hearing portion of the meeting. And does anyone from the board have any further comments or questions? Uh, Mrs. Stasi.
On page two of the application, uh, 3B, um, that you have, I would like the police department, fire department, any other department in the town, that you could volunteer the helicopter services. And, um, I'm very concerned about insurance coverage.
Yeah.
You know, it's always that, that just in case.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, and, and I'm glad you asked a good question. I can address it. Um, you know, it's, I'm looking forward with conditionals with the town and say, hey, can we maybe try this out? Right, I may never land in my house. I might land there if it's permitted. To answer your questions, two, two parts. Insurance, 100% covered, liability, call. When you're flying helicopters, you're insured. More so than you'd want to be in any other aircraft. Borderline is different than airplanes. So insurance, if I were to crash, whether it's in a field or someone's house, if I threw over someone's house, I'd be insured for more than that. Secondly, however this meeting, whether the decision turns out, I, I would hope the town of Rawlinsburg would think that I'm a phone call away if there was a need for volunteer, for charity, for search and rescue, for errors, surveillance. I want to be communal and utilize. When I spoke with the chief, he says, you know, Jared, it's a, he says, if there's ever an asset to the town that we can utilize, we'd be happy to. And there's no pressure. She said, hey, I'm, I'm here if there's any for me. Um, my father-in-law grew up, actually lived in a very small town. And he, he volunteered his helicopter services. He's a helicopter pilot as well. For 30 years, the town was polished. Search and rescue, fire department, and they utilized them quite often. And they made some rest, and whether it's to find grow patches or find dew-lust kids in the mountains, things of that nature. And so whatever this meeting, whatever turns out, I just hope you can take away that if there's a need in Rawlinsburg and the budding community, um, it's all volunteer and they're around the corner. My helicopter's in Sanford, 20 minutes.
All right, thank you. Uh, all right, so, moving on, uh, I think we're about ready to go to deliberations. I, I think in terms of the sake of the case, we know what, what this is about. Um, Mr. Trey was thinking of variance to have a private airport, um, which is not permitted. Um, I think maybe what I'd like to do is go around and have each, um, member working at the deliberation stage, give their overview of perhaps the, the application. And in particular, discuss if you think that the five, discuss each of the five criteria in your discussion, if you don't mind. So do you mind if I put you on the spot, Ms. Cass?
I don't mind, Mr. Handsman.
Got to say something.
I had some notes. Um, and I do apologize, Mr. Roberts. I did not get a chance to read your letter because I was working. So I was, I, I haven't read it.
Your loss.
I can tell, that's it. Um, but you do go through the, the criteria. So I'll just go with, for myself, uh, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest, um, in my view and what you've presented, Mr. Trey, this evening. And, um, from the letters we've received from the butters and residents, requesting that we deny the variance, that they are in opposition. So to me, that criteria hasn't been met. Um, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. I think that speaks for itself. It, it's, it's, it's not observed in granting of this. Um, substantial justice will be done. I know in your mind it is, it's, you know, it's, it's something that you've been doing for a, a number of years. Um, we've noted that, that the protective covenants don't allow it. Um, so the substantial justice where it, it may be justice for you, I, I don't think it's justice for the other residents in, in that subdivision who purchased the property knowing that they were protected covenants. Um, value of surrounding properties are not diminished, again, because of the protective covenants. You know, I, I put myself in that position. If I had purchased a home in Cottage Lane or built a home in Cottage Lane, knowing that they were subject to the protective covenants and knowing, you know, I would adhere to them and I would expect everyone else to adhere to them. And perhaps maybe the, the first course of action should have been to get protective covenants amended. Um, if everyone, you know, if you could get a form of, of individuals in your development to have agreed. You said a, a lot of you have pools. You know, to me, there may have been grounds to have that edited out.
And it was just one that equals. And I don't want to, um, I don't want to talk to you yet. I don't want to point fingers.
No, and that's fine.
I don't want to point fingers, but yes.
You know, the, the helicopter, the aviation aspect, you know, um, a lot of us here, we love the rural factor of Rawlinsburg. I myself have a very large parcel of land and have sufficient room to land a helicopter if I chose to do so, or had that, had a helicopter. I don't. I would be subject to having to go with the board for a variance as well.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not subject to protective covenants. It's the protective covenants for me. Um, there's a value there. People buy properties with protective covenants, knowing that they're going to be adhered to. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. And, you know, according to your own admission, there is no hardship. This is a convenience. And, um, I don't think that that's met either.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cass. Mrs. Stasi, go through the, the overview and go through the five criteria.
Okay. First, not be contrary to the public interest. Well, initially, when I was receiving emails, plus this evening's, you know, information of, say, of butters and those not exact of butters. You know, it's very concerning and to look at how come. And, but it really did have substantial information. And the spirit of,
So just to, just to clarify, Mrs. Stasi, I think you're saying that it, um, granted the variance would be contrary to the public interest. Is that what you're saying? Would not be in the public interest?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. I'm sorry, I'd like to fill this. And then the spirit of the ordinance is observed. I can't agree with that because, um, you moved there knowing, um, you know, what the, legalities were. And, um, initially, I had to, to think if a building contractor just started his construction and then afterwards, afterward getting a house or two built, you better get a permit. And I know that's an extreme, but it would just like, with you knowing that and, um, it just, I can't agree with the spirit of the ordinance is observed. I can't. And then substantial justice is done. And, um, and in this case also, I don't see it happening and, um, you know, to keep the noise levels right. And I cannot compare it to local electric tools. It's, uh, because when it's overhead, it's overhead. It's, um, and can be heard.
Oh, yes, it can be heard.
Yes.
So, uh, Mrs. Stasi, I think you're saying substantial justice would not be done.
That's correct.
Okay, great, great.
That's correct. I don't know if my voice.
It's okay.
Well, the values of the surrounding properties are not diminished. Well, that to me is questionable because, um, so many people, they want to know their surroundings. And, you know, the, uh, old saying, location, location. It means a lot. And, uh, you cannot say that having a helicopter, even if it's not on a regular basis. It's initially, I wouldn't be, uh, well, in my opinion, it doesn't matter. But it, I don't see it being good for, property values. And that is a lovely area that Cottage Lane is, it really is. And I'm sure that you want to keep it that way.
The hardship provision.
Okay. Um, hardship provision, I look at, again, the noise level, and even though, you have said that the fuel is not kept on your property. When a helicopter is, is there, it is that initial idea that there must be fuel. There are helicopter accidents. And, um, so it, it really is a concern between, um, just the knowledge that, that large, you know, not a large helicopter, but a large equipment is there. And, um, so to me, there would be hardship.
There would be hardship if there were.
Yes.
So you're saying there would be hardship if the variance weren't granted? Or you're saying that there would not be hardship if the variance were denied?
There, there is a hardship with it being granted.
I see, okay, all right. Thank you. All right, and so you get it.
I'm sorry, did you say hardship? There was no hardship? It couldn't be hardship?
I, I believe, it will ask, Sue, I believe what you're saying is that, um, you are not finding hardship in not granting the variance. Am I right? I asked, it's definitely.
Has the applicant had the burden?
Yes, it is.
Has the applicant had the burden of hardship? In this case?
Okay. All right, apologize for my phrase of my question. Mr. Yumida. I am so bad at interpreting these laws that I'm going to read them. And I think this will help. It will certainly help me and maybe someday I'll understand them better. For the variance to be contrary to the public interest, it must unduly, in to a market degree, violate the basic zoning objectives of the zoning ordinance. Well, this is pretty easy. Not only does it violate the basic objectives, it violates the ordinance itself. That's a clear violation. So to me, that was, clearly does not meet that criteria. And whereas Mr. Trey's application, provided much evidence contrary. The spirit of the zoning ordinance is observed again. However, when the ordinance contains a restriction against particular use of the land, the Board of Judgment would violate the spirit and intent of the ordinance by allowing that use again. This is clearly not allowed by the ordinance. So heck, the spirit doesn't meet the letter, so it certainly doesn't meet the spirit. Regarding substantial justice, the handbook goes on to say, any loss to the individual which is not outweighed by a gain to the general public would mean justice. And I don't believe Mr. Trey has shown, again, nearly the proof for which he has the burden in that case. Regarding property values, the handbook says, again, the burden is on the applicant to convince the ZVA that it is more likely than not that the project will not meet these values. And he's shown, fortunately, no, um, evidence of that, even anecdotal or, um, subjective or opinion. And then finally, the little, the, um, the hardship piece. I focus in on a couple of words here. One of them is only when the, the charac, some characteristic of particular landing question makes it different from others can unnecessary hardship be claimed. So you combine that with Mr. Trey's, uh, admission that it's, there's no personal hardship to me, it clearly doesn't meet that criteria. So in summary, it meets none of the criteria. And it's clearly a use that's not allowed. So not only, you know, I, I don't think we have the legal, not just obligation, but the authority to, to grant it. All right, thank you. Uh, Ms. Mears.
Yeah, so I appreciate that applicant, um, put conditions on the application. However, I do not feel that the applicant has met any of the five variance criteria. Do you want me to go with which one?
I suppose if you don't want to know.
I suppose if you don't want to know.
Well, just to clarify, just to clarify, the public in the board and the record.
Yes.
And in my mind, in reality, we're only required to show that one of the criteria, any one of the criteria are not met to be able to reject the variance.
So I'm going to reverse myself and say that I think for consistency, yes, I'd like you to go through each one.
Okay, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. The spirit of the ordinance has not been observed in this application. I do not believe that the applicant has shown substantial justice. The values, the applicant has not shown that the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. And enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would not result in unnecessary hardship.
Thank you. Mr. Leach, I know you're not a voting member tonight, but I'd still like to have your... Can he? You cannot. Well, the chair is... All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Nope, nope. The people here voluntarily time out. I'd like to try to, I understand that. All right. And I guess my view, Mr. Treier, I mean, you've given a nice presentation and been a lovely family and obviously love helicopters. I personally have no objection to helicopters in general. I think they're pretty cool. Having said that, I have to agree that I don't think that this meets any of the five criteria. I think that granting the variance would be contrary to the public interest. I think that the public interest in maintaining, it's a fairly, for Ralmsford standards, densely populated area. And I think that it would intrude upon the nature, the rural nature of that, of that area. This is not a permitted use anywhere in Ralmsford. In terms of whether granting the variance would observe the spirit of the ordinance, I don't think you met your burden on that. I, again, looking at the weighing of your desires versus the impact overall, I don't think you've met that. Substantial justice, I don't think substantial justice would be done by granting the variance. I think that ordinances are an expression of the will of the people, of the town residents, that is. And I don't see a compelling reason why substantial justice would be done if we granted the variance. In regard to the impact of granting the variance on the values of surrounding properties, I do, I do agree, Mrs. Yueta, that it's your burden to prove, demonstrate some evidence that it would not affect surrounding property values. And I think that there are, given the lack of evidence, I don't think you met your burden there. And I think probably the hardest thing for you to meet is that literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in necessary hardship. I know you discussed some aspects of your property that might lend itself to reducing the noise, but I don't see any particular unique characteristics of your property that indicate that there would be a necessary hardship if the variance were denied. And by your own admission, this is largely a convenience to you. And I do understand that weed whackers and chainsaws can be loud and it might, in fact, run for much longer than your helicopter. And I think the town could enact an ordinance potentially that said that we're not going to have weed whackers and chainsaws, but we don't have that ordinance, whereas we have an ordinance against private airports. And so I guess that's my comment. All right, so I think we might be ready to vote. Any board member have any, yes?
After review of the application presented to the board, I feel that the applicant has not met any of the five criteria and that this application be denied. ZBA case number 21.06.
Okay. And what I think I would like to do is, in terms of the vote...
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that? Yeah, that was very quickly said.
I would like to make a motion. After review of the application presented to the board, I feel that the applicant has not met any of their five criteria and I believe that this application should be denied.
Mr. Clark?
I understand it's a motion. There hasn't been a second, but a point of order. Should each individual criteria be voted on?
So let's...
No.
No?
No.
Yes. Can I speak? I don't know if you can at this stage.
I've already spoken loudly to my wife about that's the way you make an appeal, is there's a vote for each of the five criteria.
I've never done, I've never seen that either.
So I'm going to, why don't you rephrase your motion? We'll see it in a second. And I would say that in your motion, you should address, and you probably already did this, whether or not the five criteria have been met.
Yeah. I am making a motion after the review of the application presented to the board. I feel that the applicant has not met any of the five criteria and I vote to deny the application.
Mr. Clark?
Yeah.
Is our technical advisor...
So you want us to go through each one?
Each one.
You know, if, if please the court, if you could just do that in this instance and then we'll do research to see whether or not it's, I understand, I think that's what made me think about it. The last variance, although it was granted, it wasn't intentional, et cetera. The variance was granted without considering each individual criteria. And I think that has been the case right along. But it just occurred to me last time that I'm pretty sure each one has to be done. Yes. And I think without doing that, you may give, not, he would, you may give the applicant grounds for appeal. Certainly grounds to request a rehearing, I think.
I seem to remember something from our former chair, Mr. Putnam, discussing that. So let's do it this way. I'm going to ask each member to vote. I'm going to go through, and I think then at the end we'll make a general vote about grant or deny. I'm going to ask each member to vote whether or not, and I got to read it. Ms. Cass, how do you vote as to whether the issue of granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest?
This one always gets me. So I disagree. I think that the variance will be contrary to the public interest.
Okay. Mr. Stasi, how do you vote on that issue?
I vote on the fact that it will be contrary to public interest.
All right. Mrs. Yueta.
Well, just give me two seconds here. I think it's important that we distinguish between, if we're going, if you're going to hold us to the task of voting without a level of detail, I think we need to understand whether the burden is on us to prove it doesn't meet the public interest or that his case didn't prove that it doesn't. You see the difference?
I think so.
So my vote is that he has not shown proof of meeting that criteria, that his variance will not be contrary to the public interest.
Ms. Mears?
The granting the variance would be contrary to the public interest, so that's a vote to deny.
And I also agree that the applicant has failed to demonstrate that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Ms. Cass, how do you vote on whether or not, whether granting, in granting the variance, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed?
I don't believe the applicant has met his burden of proof.
Okay. Mrs. Stasi?
The spirit of the ordinance has not been observed.
That, are you saying that the applicant has not demonstrated that granting the variance would observe the spirit of the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Yueta.
Yeah, the granting this variance would violate the spirit of the ordinance. Okay, so therefore I vote no on that criteria.
Ms. Mears?
I vote to deny because granting the variance would be in the spirit of the ordinance.
And I find that, that granting the variance would violate the, would not observe the spirit of the ordinance. Ms. Cass, on the issue of whether or not substantial justice would be done by granting the variance, how do you vote?
I'm sorry. We're on now justice.
We're on three substantial justices?
Yeah.
Again, the applicant hasn't met the burden of proof to establish that substantial justice would be done.
All right. Mrs. Stasi?
The substantial justice would not be done, so I deny that variance.
Mrs. Yueta?
Yes, I agree that granting the variance would not be the burden of substantial justice.
Ms. Mears?
I vote to deny because substantial justice has not been done.
And I also agree that if the variance were granted, substantial justice would not be done. Ms. Cass, on the item four, whether or not granting the variance would result in surrounding properties, the surrounding properties not being diminished.
I vote to deny as I don't believe the applicant has met his burden of proof that the properties will not be diminished.
Mrs. Stasi?
Okay, I deny with the fact that the properties, the applicant has not proved that properties would not be, values would not be diminished.
Mrs. Yueta?
I vote to deny the ordinance, or the variance for the same reason that he has not provided for property values to not diminish.
Ms. Mears?
I vote to deny. I don't believe the applicant has proved that the values of surrounding properties are not diminished.
And I also agree that the applicant has not proven that granting the variance, that it would not result in the values of substantial, surrounding properties being, not being diminished. Ms. Cass, the issue of number five of hardship?
I vote to deny as I don't feel the applicant has met his burden of proof that he needs the burden of unnecessary hardship.
Mrs. Stasi?
Okay, denying the fact that, that there would be a hardship. So he has not proved that there would not be unnecessary hardship.
Okay. Mrs. Yueta?
I vote to deny the variance based on the fact that he hasn't proven unnecessary hardship.
Ms. Mears?
I vote to deny because I do not believe the applicant has proven unnecessary hardship.
And I also vote to deny because I do not believe the applicant has proven that literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. So I think now, Ms. Mears, if you might want to revisit your motion you were making earlier?
All right. After review of the application presented to the board, I feel the applicant has not met any of their five criteria and I make a motion to deny the application.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All right. All in favor of, did I, all right.
I'll vote.
All right, sorry. Ms. Cass, on the outstanding present motion, how do you vote?
Agree. To deny.
Thank you. Mrs. Stasi, on the motion, how do you vote?
Agree to deny.
All right. Mr. Yueta, on the motion, how do you vote?
I vote to deny the variance.
And Ms. Mears, on the motion, how do you vote?
I vote to deny the variance.
And I also agree and vote to deny the variance. It's a unanimous decision. Thank you, Mr. Treier. I'm sorry you were successful, but thank you for your presentation tonight. And thank everyone who's participated as a member of the public from attending. Thank you very much. Sorry to be in the circle of trouble, but...
My nine-year-old son on the way here explained to me what I was doing. He's like, Dad, you didn't get hammered? I said, it wasn't that bad, you know?
Next time I'll write it down.
Yeah, I didn't get hammered, so I just need to understand. I can never land at my property at any time.
I haven't had a chance to read it on the... We still have like two minutes, two minutes to...
Oh, is there a question answered?
You are not. You are all set.
Can you just ask a question? Should he ask us or should he?
Can I ask a question?
So you can...
I don't know.
The board can't give you legal advice, so I'm a little leery of...
It's just a rule.
It could be to the building official. Rets?
Can we do it outside of the meeting?
Yeah.
Sure.
Why don't you hang around after the meeting?
Okay.
I don't want to get in trouble with anything up there.
It's a little step away from the question. Okay.
We'll be home.
You can stick around and watch this boring stuff.
What? What are you doing?
Just boring.
I bring a minute. Sit down.
Nothing related to this case.
I do have a suggestion. Are you done with this case?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, what most ZBAs have is a scorecard and then, you know, the members, and they have the five criteria as like a box. And the applicant needed a burden on, you know, criteria one, two, three, four, five. And then each member said yes, no, yes, no, because the important part is, on appeal, when a court gets this, they may find differently on one of the elements, but not the others. And then they're going to look to see what's the sum total of the vote. And so the scorecard is really handy. Vote for applicant, people that are against it, and more important for the judge. So I just offer that. Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
All right. So in terms of the signing, the decision, unless you want to shoot your hand up, I don't mind doing it. I'll do it more readily than last time. All right, I'll sign the decision to myself. Next, I made Jennifer approve of the minutes from March 25th, it looks like, 2021, and July 8th, 2021. As folks have the opportunity to review the minutes and any comments on them or also entertain a motion to approve them or disapprove?
You could probably also like... This one as well.
I want to do my little bit. All right, so, okay, all right, so. After the minutes, okay. So can we participate? All right, so. Do you want, we want to rest the minutes or we want to put it off or what do you want to do?
I think Andrea is still reviewing.
Yeah.
All right, so we're going to continue that until the next meeting. In terms of the, I obviously sent out the draft of the decision. I was tarrying getting that. I apologize.
Emily, did you repeat that?
I'm just reading that now. Okay. Is this just here tonight as well? I was working up until the meeting.
Can we do a, an interred vote?
They just have to be submitted. I certainly approve of this pending.
And I don't think that would really have much of an impact because you approved it. You approved the variance. Okay. Okay, okay. And the applicant, in that case, still has to go from the pending group, so.
Well, the other thing is that the expectation is that there's 30 days between meetings, so it's fine.
Are there any other business for the board?
Can we approve the ZBA?
It has to be a live vote.
It has to be a live vote. You can't make any decisions over it. I mean, I'm not serving the community.
Is there any other business before us?
I would like to figure out how we're going to address the, our own procedural rules. I'm pretty sure, make it pretty clear exactly what we need to do related to whether, whether all five have to be addressed in the motion? Or I'm pretty sure though, it's all, all five have to be addressed in the vote, but not necessarily in the motion.
Within the minutes, you all commented on them in the deliberation. That is the clarification. So if you want to go back and the case challenged in court, that's the evidence that everybody's opinion, what everybody's meaning was on each of the five criteria.
I would like to...
I've never seen it either.
She said when voting on the five variance criteria, it's different courts deal with it different ways. Some vote on each of the five criteria. If one fails to pass variance, it's denied. Others vote on the entire block in one vote. Neither is right or wrong. They may yield different results.
Now, I don't disagree though that it's wise to address the five criteria at some point in the deliberation by, if not one member, you know, at least in total, all the members have touched on at least.
Sue, that, do you remember that workshop that I sent you the link to? So, so in that workshop, I think Madigan who did, whatever. One of the people who presented said on his ZBA board that he was a member of, they would go through and the chair would say on this, like, how do you feel? Basically what we did afterwards, like this whole... So then you do have a recorded, like, opinion, everybody's opinion on each of the...
Maybe we should have a workshop to have them come in again.
I mean, to be honest, so it was just a procedural workshop that they did, another procedural workshop that they did, that I wanted to go to, but I wasn't able to, but there's a recording of it. I mean, I think there's, it's on the line, you know, that you can access just individually.
And let me say, I apologize for throwing a monkey wrench in the works at the last minute. And this is definitely something we should have, we should have addressed early on. And do we, did we approve the procedural ZBA?
May I ask, Ms. Kendall, what about the idea of bringing Mr. Raddigan in for training? Is there funds for that for half an hour or an hour?
Not specifically designated, but I think the select board would support that.
And do we have to make that an official request to vote on or is my speaking to you now enough to do that?
I would suggest that you vote to do that because individually you can't really request it since it's an expense, but if collectively you're requesting it, then the board would have more reason to consider it. In other words, if it's just one person, that might be handled differently than if you're asking somebody to come and address the board.
I'd like to research if there's video on the municipal association website, website.
I mean, review that. I can send you the links to the latest procedural work.
Raddigan is not only providing that training, but isn't he also illegal?
Yeah, he is. And I don't know if it was Raddigan who did it.
It was Raddigan.
No, the municipal one, the, that we, I think that was a different one.
So we wouldn't be getting the opinion of some other zoning folks, we'd be getting the opinion of all.
Yes, the municipal association who puts these workshops on.
Then we can integrate that into our procedure. I think that's really why. All right, so what I think I'm hearing is that we don't want to bring, the feeling of the board is we don't want to bring Mr. Raddigan in, we instead want to look on...
Well, why don't, why don't we do this? I will send you both, I will send everybody the links to the workshop that I went to before, that I sent it to before, but if anybody didn't see it. And this most current one, which was procedural, specifically procedural. Check those out. If we decide that we want more input, then maybe we can go down to the next meeting.
And it sounds like we can go either way. We just need to definitively say each, each meeting, we're going to do the five criteria and maybe having a table for you, John, with our names and it's...
Well, I keep notes on that, but I guess I get greater. I keep notes on that when I write the decision as to how everyone voted on that.
So let me just make an argument against each of us trying to reiterate in our own words the complexity of those five.
Yeah.
A, that doesn't help the public, and B, I think it under, undermine our case because I am so careful to choose my words now because A, they're not like common sense to the average layperson. And B, I think an applicant could construe that as confusion and it's just another avenue to provide some doubt that I think we should try to eliminate.
So do we have to read it or can we just say on the first...
Criteria one.
I, I voted no.
Right, denied.
I don't think it, I say it doesn't mean, or two, it doesn't mean it.
And you can list the criteria.
Yeah, because it doesn't matter, I guess it doesn't matter.
One or two.
It's really one, I just need...
And that's just it, you know?
Well, and it seems subjective too, because what you consider him not meeting in terms of like hardship, you might have a different opinion.
Right.
The more I read the handbook, the more I believe this to be, you know, so malleable and ill-defined that it just confuses the public and it confuses the applicant. And the best place for the succinct alliteration of the five criteria and why they aren't met is in the summary decision, you know, in which you take the input from all of us and you meld it into something that is as clear and succinct as we can make it. That's just my opinion.
All right, so is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.